Meeting of the New Canaan Board of Education. First up to approve the minutes from our April 6 meeting, is there a motion? Sheri, second. Bob, all in favor? Okay, unanimous. Next is to review and approve this, the agenda for the evening. Is there a motion? Julie, second. Carl, all in favor? Unanimous. Next is comments from the public pursuant to executive order number 7B by the governor on March 14th. The town of New Canaan is modifying the procedures followed for public comment in attendance at town meetings during the coronavirus pandemic. To ensure the public's right to be heard, the board has set aside time during the meeting for public comments. Two minutes will be allotted to each speaker and a maximum of 15 minutes to each subject. Is there anyone wishing to address the board?
And again, I would invite you to raise your hand as an attendee and we can hit, I can hit allow to talk. So I believe this is.
Norton.
Okay, I'm going to put Lisa. Okay, Lisa, I can unmute you. All right, Lisa, are you there?
Oh, yeah. Sorry, I didn't have my video on. I thought, I thought we could join as video people, so I didn't turn on the video.
Well, it said that you have an older version of Zoom, so it wouldn't last. But yes, please go ahead.
Okay. Um, I just wanted to ask, um, I don't know if it's a request, I guess you won't necessarily answer me now, but, um, I just wanted to ask the board to please consider other options for healthy start times now that, of course, the, the budget was voted down and that first, you know, option is not available. I wanted to ask the board to please consider other options because a lot of us do still care about that and, you know, do still want to follow up to have healthier start times for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Looks like Keely Norton.
Hi, can you hear me?
Gotcha. Yep, go ahead.
Like Lisa, I am still very concerned about the school start times for next year. I was incredibly disappointed by the town council's vote. I think it was incredibly short sighted and against medical and scientific research and also against the board's recommendation. I myself am a middle school teacher in Stanford and my school doesn't start until 8:30 a.m. And I have colleagues in the district who start at well earlier than that and see the difference and their test scores bear that out. Not that I put a lot of credence on test scores as a teacher myself, but I'm incredibly concerned as my daughter is going to be a seventh grader next year and our bus time is 6:45 a.m. And I literally think that is cruel unusual punishment. So I am also listening tonight to find out if there are other options being considered and what can be done to support the health of our students so that they can be academically, emotionally, and socially healthy moving forward. I know there's a lot of research out there to support this. I've done research myself and I can't seem to find a whole heck of a lot that has research that shows there's any harm to elementary age students for going in earlier. I know my own daughter was up at the crack of crack. I mean, I could set my alarm by her for 5:45 a.m. pretty much until she was in fourth grade. And now as a sixth grader, her natural start time, now that we've had these distance learning days and in Saks itself actually starts things off an hour later during distance learning, she doesn't naturally wake up until 7:30 a.m. And we have her absolutely positively in bed at 10:00 p.m. at the absolute latest. We try to get her in bed by 9:30 p.m. But again, that, that, that clock for her is ticking, that those rhythms are not quite letting her go to sleep. But regardless, we put her in bed and I'm really, really concerned about next year and looking forward to seeing what creative options the board has had to come up with this year's budget to help preserve our children's health moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any others? Okay. Thank you.
Great, so moving on. Moving on to reports and recognition with an update on school closures. Dr. Letty, turn it back to you.
Great, thanks Katrina. And thank you all. I know it's been a couple of weeks, so we thought that we could give an update on things going on around the district and of course, open it up for any questions, discussion, other information that we can, excuse me, I'm sorry, that we can help to provide answers for. So let me do, sorry. There we go. Just do that. So I thought that I would share an update just from, from our health department just today. Julie Reeve shared a document with us about some of the things going on. Did I say Julie Reeves? I'm sorry, Janet Reed. Sorry, Julie. I didn't need to do that. Janet Reed shared with us some information that I think could be helpful and I'll put it in context a little bit as well. I continue to participate in the eight o'clock calls with the emergency operations center, which of course is the first selectman and, you know, Mike Handler, it's chief of police, fire chief, fire marshal, other ambulance, EMS, EMT, CERT. It's about 14 or so people, each one of them incredibly dedicated and talented. So in those calls, also our Dr. Harrison Pierce, who works with Norwalk Hospital and Dr. David Reed, who works at Stanford Hospital. So they give us an update from each of the hospitals. And as you, you likely know, Norwalk is part of a seven hospital consortium as well that spans, you know, really across the state and even over into New York. So really amazing things going on and the information and the knowledge that's being developed and the understanding that's being developed about this virus and everything that's happening is really impressive and encouraging, you know, as we sort of continue in the state that we're in. So, so that the health information, local context, today in Connecticut is the 11th day of declining hospitalizations, which is a key number because we're looking for a pattern of declining hospitalizations. And throughout this, the, in Connecticut, the three numbers we've been tracking are the number of cases, the number of deaths, and the number of hospitalizations. It's a number of cases, as you know, is difficult because it's all dependent upon testing and the, the amount, number of people that are tested. So that's where we shifted to the number of hospitalizations early in this process. I think it's been helpful for us. Back in early August, I mean, early April and mid-April, the cases and the deaths in Connecticut were doubling on most days. And since April 23rd, the death count does continue to rise each day. But that's really due to the folks that have been sick and have been in the hospital and the system for a period of time. So the new hospitalizations going down is a good sign, you know, as we look at the transmission of this all throughout the region. This, again, this primarily, Stanford Norwalk's where a lot of the data comes from, but this is statewide. You know, when we look at the list of states that are most impacted, of course, you have New York, you have New Jersey, you have Massachusetts, a few others. And some people might think that we're doing well because Connecticut's not on that list. Really, the, the hotspot in Connecticut, if you want to call it that, or where it's most intensely located or localized, is right in Fairfield County. When we look at Fairfield County, sadly, of the 3,000 counties in the United States, we hover around 13th or 14th in the country for the death rate. And that's a sad statistic. That's just the reality of, you know, where we are, our proximity to New York, population, other things. The symptoms recently have been expanded. It's always, from the start, it's been fever, shortness of breath, and cough. Last week, they expanded that to include chills, sore throat, headache, muscle pain, and something that's sort of different with this, but that seems to be relatively common in half or more of the folks, is a loss of their sense of taste and smell. So different things that, you know, may indicate. Of course, many people, if they do feel some of the symptoms are sheltering at home and isolating and working through that, and that doesn't become a hospitalization, which is great. Those people start to have that shortness of breath or a, you know, difficulty breathing at any time they need to call 911, of course, go to the hospital. The testing, you know, we have, the testing has been problematic from the start in our region and across the country. New Canaan got out front early, again, through the EOC and the work that they were doing with the health department, with Jen and Mike and others, by having Dr. Murphy come to Saks and do some of that drive-up testing to try to, you know, get ahead of things. The diagnostic testing, which detects active infections or lingering illness after active illness, exists right now. And they're doing the antibody testing in some places as well to, which would indicate past infection. But the, unfortunately, the reliability rate on these tests isn't high yet. They're getting better and better. They're looking at different antibodies, trying to figure out how to do the tests the best that they can. But the testing is creating a situation where the reporting of those who have contracted the illness and either recovered or still have it is not particularly reliable at this point. The, what happens if the cases are under-reported and then the death rate, fatality rate in this becomes inflated? Because you only know about the hospitalizations and you know about the mortalities, but you don't know kind of that larger percentage of folks that have it. The antibody testing is problematic. It was sort of rushed to market by a number, by 40 some odd companies, I believe, with very, with little quality control. So it's creating false positives and false negatives. I've even heard numbers of around 30%. So again, they're getting better and they're learning a lot, but you know, in a rush to try to understand this and try to work through things, that's been a bit challenging. The, the news that they found an antiviral that seems to be decreasing the duration of the illness is good news. Even though it decreases the duration, they're finding control versus experimental group by a couple of days. But what it really means is they're hoping they found something that will have an impact on the virus that they can look to expand. I believe that was developed by, or is being developed by the company that developed Tamiflu. So they also have some experience in this type of work. We've heard talk about herd immunity. Oops, sorry. Siri keeps popping up on me. We've heard talk about herd immunity and that's where at least 60% of our community have it. According to the New York antibody testing that they've done, they can extrapolate out that they believe about 15% of the, of New York has been positive. And that's the epicenter here in this, in the country, of course. The last piece around the health side, that we like to compare this to the flu and to think about, you know, this, we go through the flu every year. Will this be like the flu? And those, those comparisons are flawed for a couple of reasons. One, that it has, the flu has a fatality rate of .04 to .1% on a really bad year. Right now, public health officials, scientists are anticipating that COVID could have around a .5% fatality rate when all is said and done, which would be five times higher than our worst flu season. But it goes, you can go on this also because of the flu vaccines, we only have about 10 to 20% of the population contract the flu each year. Where Harvard Public, School of Public Health has estimated that 20 to 60% of the population may get COVID-19. So it's more, it's deadlier than the flu and significantly more people may get it, which is, you know, why the measures we've taken, while they may seem extreme, have been necessary and do seem to, to be helping in speaking this morning with the EOC. The, it was shared again, the census over at Stanford Hospital continued, has gone down and continues to drift down. They're still higher than they would typically be by a significant amount, but they have, they do seem to plateau to be moving in the right direction. Same with the number of people in the ICU and same with the number of people on ventilators. Again, based on the conversations that I get, I feel privileged to be able to listen to sometimes between Dr. Pierce and Dr. Reed, that what they're learning has been very, very powerful and where initially they were intubating people, putting them on ventilators, or finding other ways to provide the oxygen that's less intrusive, that's helping people to recover more quickly and really share the, sharing knowledge together and, and learning so much about all of this. The virus itself, as you know, it, it seems to attack people's weak spots, right? It goes after, it seems to attack the immune system. It started out as cause of that, a pulmonary issue is moved into cardiovascular. They're seeing things with people's kidneys, they're seeing things, you know, in different ways. And you've probably fallen on the news as well, sort of how, you know, this, it continues to appear differently sometimes for different folks in different ways. So it's certainly people with immune, or with compromised immune systems need to be extra cautious. But the, again, the good news is the measures that we've been taking as a society and as a town and as a school district do appear to be effective or helping us to flatten the, the curve, so to speak, and to kind of navigate all of this. So there's a lot more to be said, I'm sure. I want to thank Janet for sending over the summary that she did, but just wanted to give that sort of medical piece because, you know, we, we are so fortunate to have such talented and knowledgeable people working on our behalf and a part of the conversation each morning as we talk about New Canaan and we talk about Connecticut and the region and all of that. The closure itself, I'd sent some there on today that shared a little bit of what's going on across the district. And while we're here, here tonight, I do want to say thank you to our, our teachers and all of our staff, but specifically our teachers, as today is the first day of teacher appreciation week. Normally, we would be spoiling them with wonderful lunches and different things that we could do during the school day. So we're virtually doing our best to make sure they recognize and understand and how, just how grateful we are for everything they're doing. You know, for Vivian, Birdsall, Rana Van Bagel, the leaders of the teachers association and everybody across the, the district. Very grateful for all their amazing work. We have, as a district, also expanded our efforts operationally to try to, to continue helping the most vulnerable in the community. We've done our work around helping to source fresh food and groceries for folks who can't or shouldn't leave their homes for the reasons we were just talking about. So by doing that, we're able to actually provide groceries essentially, you know, the fresh produce and meat and bread and things that are not the shelf-stable things you can typically get at a, at a food pantry, but things that you would buy for yourself where you go to the grocery store. That's thanks to Joanne, to Michelle in our cafeteria, to everybody that's doing all the work, to CERT and to town folks who are helping to package and to deliver the, the groceries out to those that need them once every couple of weeks. The operation also for our Meals on Wheels program continues to run very well, again, thanks to the same, same group, where we are cooking for close to 70 clients, quote unquote, each day. And those are, they're being delivered cold lunch and a hot dinner. And I'm, I'm being told that they eat the hot dinner first, so maybe it's a hot lunch and a cold dinner. But either way, we're getting the food out and just again, making sure that the most vulnerable amongst us are, are cared for in different ways. Continuing to bring our food out to our folk, our kids on free reduced lunch and, and to provide services wherever we can to, to help. You know, that's the, there are lots of challenges and, and experience that we're all going through. Maintaining the educational experience is one of our goals, but it's also to help to keep our students connected to our teachers, to each other, to our schools, and to make sure that we, we create a system that helps to promote and nurture and continue to strengthen their educational health, but also social, emotional, and physical health, you know, as we're doing all of this. I'm going to catch my breath for a moment and see if anybody wants to add anything from their respective areas. If not, I'll just pick it back up. Dari, you're on mute.
Sorry, I always forget that I turned that off. I'll just quickly add that the human resources department is continuing in the same vein as the last time we talked. We're meeting regularly and performing all the same functions that we did prior to going out in terms of absence management and accruals and projects and hiring and monitoring of certification and retirement and resignation. And it's been busy. It really has. Everyone's been working really hard and answering a lot of requests and concerns and calls. We do have some sick teachers, so we're helping them through all that. And we planned proactively in terms of substitutes, so we're in a good place with that small number of teachers that are needing to take at least the two weeks and it's going really well. So we're doing a lot of this and it's going well.
Thank you.
All right. Joanne.
What? Okay. So just to add to that, operationally, I think the district is running very smoothly. We're continuing to do all the functions we would have been doing in, in school. And so we're transitioning right now at this point to really thinking through what it's going to look like when we get back in session, be it later this year or early next year. And just, you know, what is the footprints of the building? How can we accommodate the kids that we have? How do we do it safely? And each of us have our own areas that we are thinking about and then we think about it as a team as well. But there's a lot of work ahead of us with getting ready to come back and we're looking forward to getting into that phase of our work. Thank you.
I can certainly give an update on distance learning. I think the last time I spoke with all of you, we were on just beginning phase two. So we are clear into phase three at this point, but as you recall, during phase two, it was once again looking at those three overarching goals that we had in regards to making sure that the work was relevant and meaningful for the students to help them continue to learn and progress. And then certainly it was the whole connection of keeping the kids connected with their teachers and their peers and their school. And then that third was really providing that continuity and consistency. So I think we're achieving all three of those goals. I think probably when we moved into phase two was a smart choice. We slowed down the pace, we slowed down the time, and we offered professional learning. And really during that opportunities of professional learning, we spent so much time training the teachers on how to use a wide variety, variety of technology tools. And they have really been so beneficial as we've moved into phase three. So during that phase two, they really learned about the different tools that they could use for synchronous learning as well as asynchronous. And really, the two tools that they use for the synchronous is really Google Meet, Zoom, or Schoology. And that's really where they can interact with the students live. So when they were first in phase two, it was more about those connections. Let's have a morning meeting. Let's have snack time. Let's just get together and check in with one another. And then they started to play around with the asynchronous tools. And that would be our Screencastify, our Flipgrid, EduPuzzle, WeVideo, ZoomRecorded. And the teachers spent hours doing recorded video lessons and presenting them to the students. And I think that I've shared some of those through those Friday updates to give you a little bit of a perspective of what the, the teachers have been doing during phase two. And then as we moved into phase three, and certainly some of the teachers had already dived into this during phase two, they really started to talk about, you know, what's that deeper instruction that I can give to students? And then how can I begin to offer that feedback to them? And so now it was taking it to the next step. So if I did a videotaped lesson in Screencastify and then I asked the students to do some type of Google form or some type of presentation and send it back to me, they would then look at all of what was sent back to them and then make some decisions about some small group instruction. So then they would call kids and say, you know, I need to meet with so-and-so and so-and-so, these five students during writing, or these students during a math lesson. And so then that's how they were giving them the feedback. And so they continue to work in that area, knowing that the end of the year will come at some point and they're going to need to make some decisions about what kind of feedback they want to give to students and ultimately to the parents about how the students have progressed during this distance learning. So they've done an incredible job, I think, with all three of the goals. I think they have been amazing. Some of the asynchronous videos, I mean, are just absolutely amazing. They could be part of a PBS channel. I mean, they, they really are of high quality, whether they're in the arts or in math or in ELA. And then I think now they're figuring out the times that it makes sense to use synchronized. When do I go live with kids? When do I use asynchronous? When do I blend the two of them together? And we've also had, you know, I do want to just kind of give a shout out to the nature center because they have really been very supportive in constant communication with Melinda and saying, you know, here's a great resource that we have right here in our community and how can we help to support our science curriculum? So I think I did share a video with you that Bill Flynn did with seed dispersal that was sent off into the second grade. There was another one that was released about owls and what they, the owls that live in our ecosystem and some of the other animals that live over at the nature center. So they've been a nice partner during this and many other organizations, Sound Waters and Stanford, a few others have reached out to offer some support to us as well.
In terms of special education, we continue to follow the federal and state guidance and implement IEPs to the greatest extent possible. Special ed teachers have done an amazing job with live instruction. They were some of the first out of the gate with the live instruction. And I think it's fair to say that the majority of special ed teachers are doing live instruction throughout the entire day, which is amazing. It's a, it's a lot of work, but you know, they're dedicated to helping their students as much as possible. So they spend the great majority of their day doing live instruction. OT, PT, and speech, you know, they continue to be very creative in their instruction. They're providing services through a variety of modalities. They consult with parents, they send home recorded videos, they do live instruction, they're sending other materials home for parents to try and, and implement with their, their kids at home when they have the opportunity to do so. The biggest challenge, you know, we continue to face is programming for our high needs students. You know, it's a, it's a difficult thing sometimes to get these students engaged through distance learning. But, you know, the staff is working diligently to do so. You know, I think it's important, you know, while, while we're doing a tremendous job, I think it's important that we acknowledge, you know, that some of these parents are struggling. It's hard for all parents doing this distance learning, but parents who have students with special needs in some cases, you know, it's a, it's an incredibly difficult and challenging time. You know, we recognize that as a department, as a school district, you know, that it's, it's a challenge for, for many parents who are struggling with students who have special needs. In terms of PPTs, we are having PPTs on a limited basis. The decision to hold a PPT is made in conjunction with family and special education administrators, but our primary goal continues to be having teachers involved with direct instruction with kids. So we're kind of, we're very judicious in the PPTs that we have. We follow criteria that we've laid out in guidance with the state to determine which PPTs are needed to have during the closure and which we can put off till we can get back in the buildings and be face-to-face. Our out-of-district students continue to be engaged in distance learning through their placements and we monitor on a weekly basis, sometimes twice a week, three times a week. We're in contact with those families to make sure that things are going okay. So they've been receiving their services as well. Extended school year is now where we stand in terms of, of planning. You know, we're anxiously waiting guidance from the state about what the rest of the school year will look like and what summer may or may not look like. At this point, we are planning for a brick and mortar ESY program. You know, I don't know where we're going to land on that, but we are undertaking the beginnings of planning what that might look like in terms of the day, how the day would look relative to what it would have been in the past. Trying to, to provide greater opportunity for students to be back into the, back in schools and get some solid instruction face-to-face. You know, but if we can't hold a brick and mortar ESY, we are prepared to do it through a distance learning as well. So one way or another, we will provide services for extended school year for students with special needs. I think that pretty much will cover.
Thank you. Yep, so just a couple other things and then we, I'm glad to open it up. The, I do, we do want to share that, and I know that a few, Jill's been doing this often, but last week I was able to visit a number of classrooms. I went into a couple of kindergarten rooms, I went into second grade, went into sophomore English classroom, went into an AP English classroom, able to just sort of virtually drop in, see some of what's happening. And then at the high school level, was able to open it up to some questions. And then at the high school level is able to open it up to some questions and to, to get some feedback. And I'll share, share one or two things. Of course, the kindergarten rooms were just awesome. I mean, we were, the icebreaker was, would you rather be invisible or be able to fly? And, and then it was, they would pick one and then if they wanted to, they could explain why. So, you know, we, she'd call on one of the children and she'd say, I would like to be invisible. Teacher said, would you like to tell us why? She'd say, nope. And that would be it. We'd move on. It was the cutest thing ever. And then going around, it was about a mix, about 50/50 invisible to fly. But the teachers were so kind and generous to invite me in. And it's happening more and more across the district to be able to go in, see what's happening and talk with the teach, with the kids. When I talked to the high school students, asked them about, you know, what's working, what's not, they pretty universally complimented their teachers, you know, and the work that they're doing and said that the distance learning is working for them. And they were grateful for the block schedule and the shift in the use of time. You know, as they thought about what this experience might be like on the typical schedule, I think we'd be in a very different place. That's changing the pace and there's those shifts in phase two seem to make a big difference. And, and everything is, you know, they understand, you know, as they're, as we're moving through these things. The, there are a few questions, things that are hanging out there that we're going to continue to work through this week. Specifically, questions about grading. You know, we've been working for the last couple of weeks, having some meetings and discussions to make some determinations around what, what is the right and best thing to do with grading across the district K-12, being guided, of course, with a do no harm approach to be sure that whatever our ultimate decision is, that there are ways to ensure that students aren't harmed because of the shutdown and the pandemic and everything that's going on. Bill and I continue to have conversations regularly about graduation and Bill Egan, trying to figure out what's the right way, best way to honor and recognize our seniors for graduation. I know he's had many conversations with his PFA and other folks. And we've had some conversations with staff, some conversations with kids. You know, we're still in the place where everyone wants to have a traditional graduation. And we all want to have a traditional graduation. But we've got to say, okay, so if we can't, you know, what, what are the parameters we have to work under? And what can we do with that? Same goes for our award ceremonies, you know, when we think about all of those things that we do that honor and recognize our students, both from, at all transitions, of course, the largest is graduation, but it's not the only one. You know, our moving up ceremony with eighth grade, you know, the eighth grade promotion, eighth to ninth grade, and even the celebrations and ceremonies we have for our fourth graders moving on and moving up. All of that's really important. So we are working on and thinking about what, what we can do and we'll be able to get more concrete once we know what parameters we're working under. The enrollment continues to be an interesting challenge. You know, we talked about this a little while ago. The, our kindergarten enrollment seems to have sort of come to a stop, you know, as we, we had our, our shutdown. I know Laura's out there and we're, we're going to start our data verification process, which sometimes helps to bring new kindergarten and other enrollments in. We are using the Zoom webinars to set up our kindergarten orientations virtually and be able to do that so that people can, you know, sort of keep moving on. Cause it is really important for us to keep moving forward in our preparations for next year. We may not know exactly what it's going to look like, but there's going to be school. So we have to continue doing our work in order to keep going with those preparations. Our scheduling at the schools, you know, our high school scheduling, our middle school scheduling, all of those conversations and all of that's underway. Of course, as is the conversation with the cabinet at this point, the principals about the budget reductions so that we can bring some recommendations to the board in the next couple of weeks around where those reductions would come and how to manage that. The question that should be foremost on everyone's mind is should be the, the May 20th question. You know, are we anticipating being able to come back to school and some semblance of school on May 20th? As is the governor's order now. I believe that tomorrow, the governor's press conference will have an announcement about that. I anticipate that, like our neighbors to the north and to the south and to the east and to the west, that Connecticut schools will be closed for the remainder of the school year. But it's not, we're not sure until we have that announcement, which I do anticipate coming tomorrow. I also believe, Bill mentioned ESY and other camps. I believe there'll be some guidelines given for those for the summertime. They've already through executive order and some communications, given some guidelines for summer camps and some planning. But according to some communications I received today from the commissioner's office, I anticipate that we'll have guidance for the remainder of the year and more information so we can begin planning and thinking about summer ESY or other programs and what we'd have to adjust and do differently in order to hold those sessions in person versus virtually. So I hate to end with a cliffhanger, but I think the answer, I think we'll hear some more information tomorrow. That'll help us to continue to plan forward. And now we will stop and glad to answer any questions or engage in any conversation.
Can I just, can I just ask Brian how we are identifying the students and families that need from a, from a food standpoint? And, you know, I think it's great, obviously, what, what the district and you all are doing to, to make sure that people are well fed. And, and so I just, I wanted to get a sense as to how you're identifying those families and getting them what they need.
Sure. So on the grocery deliveries, Jen at the health department called all of the seniors that live in the schoolhouse apartments in Milport and in, I have to find another, another area in town. It was hundreds and hundreds of people called them individually to assess their need and to see if this is something that would be beneficial for them for the grocery deliveries. But our school, social workers and school counselors are also pretty tuned in and some of our special education staff as well. And so they've reached out to us also to share with us some needs. If there's something, if there are needs out there that we're unaware of, we would encourage anyone to reach out to their school principal, their school counselor, social worker, or even, even to me, and I can connect them up with the, with people so that we can make sure those needs are met. It was New Haven Parish was the third one, sorry. So calls were actually made individually, kind of had conversations to see if they had another reliable source for food. And if not, we were able to step in because the, the community was, it continues to be incredibly great, generous with gift cards and other ways to help people. But some of our, again, most vulnerable seniors that are in the, you know, sort of the ages where this is even more dangerous, we don't want them using gift cards necessarily. We'd like them to continue to stay safe at home. So instead of having them go out, we're, we're bringing it to them.
That's great. It's great work. Thank you.
Thank you. Sure.
So first, I just want to express my gratitude for what I describe as the heroic efforts of everyone in the district. And I thought, I think your email today laid it out really well. But, you know, everyone from the food services to transportation, to the nurses, to all of the teachers and staff, it's just really incredible to witness what's being delivered, both to the community, but, and then also to the students via the online learning program. So I just want to say thank you, especially since it's teacher appreciation week. So a big thank you to all the teachers. I've, we've always known that teachers work above and beyond, but I think in these trying times, I mean, I think their commitment and dedication and what they're accomplishing is just, it's, it's heroic. I will use that word because I think it truly fits. So my question is, if, if, if the governor, as, as we're expecting, follows New York and New Jersey tomorrow and extends the school closure, is there, have you heard any possibility that we could actually, that he may shorten the 182 day requirement? Several parents have asked me, I've also read that there are other districts who are saying, you know, in this e-learning environment, you know, the goals have changed a little bit and we just can't, you know, fulfill the full school year calendar. And so whether it's shortening by a week or however long, I'm just curious if there was been any discussions in that regard in Connecticut.
Yep. That's a great question. The, since the very beginning, once this, once it was understood to be more than 14 days, you know, sort of the phase one into phase two, since then, the commissioner's office, the governor's office, the state board of education have been consistent in asking student, districts to keep the last day of school intact that they had on the day of their closure. So they have specifically and expressly asked every district in Connecticut not to shorten their school year, but to keep that as the target end of, end of the school year date. It's a, it's 180 days. We indicated to 182. The state requires 180. So we have been faithful to that request. And have said that our, the last day of school would remain that unless something were to change. I don't have any indication that it would change. But you don't, we don't, I don't know. You know, I, I think that, well, I know that the communication has been very clear. So when we did our extra days over the spring break, you know, we talked about if possible and if appropriate, we could look at shortening the school year by moving up the date. But if that's not possible, or if we don't think that's the best thing to do, we could also look at sporadically using a day here and there to break up, you know, the remainder of the school year and maybe use it as a, to break up a day here and there for families, for teachers, for everybody to be able to just take, take a step back and, and enjoy a nice day, kind of a, a reverse snow day. So instead of calling a day, school day off because it's bad, it's snowy and dangerous outside. We'd call it off because it's a beautiful day and people should be, you know, be outside getting fresh air. So we've talked about that, but the, right now I don't have any indication that the state's going to encourage or even necessarily permit school districts to shorten their school year below the 180.
I just, I have a question on the distance learning and how we are, I guess, tracking and measuring what we're learning, success, things that are working well, things that we wish, you know, we could change if we had more time or resources as we look to, you know, the fall and the potential to have, you know, some, some potential for, for distance learning even on a small scale. Just wondering if, you know, there's, there's a process in place to be able to track and document all of this, you know, as we move forward, as this is a time we've never really planned for or experienced. So, you know, while we don't have a lot of time, I think it's important to understand from all the stakeholders, what, you know, at the end of this, what, what works, what worked well and, you know, where things potentially change or be modified.
So I can, do you want me to start, Brian, or do you want to start? I know you put yourself on mute, but I wasn't sure.
Well, I did because my dog started barking. I'll briefly say that a few weeks back, we met with our principals and, and similarly shared with them that the pace of this is not going to slow. You know, this is going to maintain, remain intense and challenging all throughout. And we really encourage them to create time in their day and their experience to reflect on what's happening and to capture what they felt to be artifacts that would be informative when we do have time to sort of go through more around the process and the work that we're doing. As you know, our principals are communicating daily, they're creating videos, they're sending those things out there, you know, meeting with staff, doing other things. So with this lens of being able to learn from it, we've asked them to almost put sort of digital portfolios together where they have a folder and they're periodically putting things in there that we could, that sort of capture decisions, capture changes, capture, you know, evolution as we go. But Jill, you can go right.
So I can speak from a curriculum perspective. So certainly the, the curriculum, what we've done is we've really been meeting as a group of, you know, the curriculum leaders and taking a look at each of the units of study and then adjusting accordingly. So that we know that the learning pace is moving so much slower. And there's certain standards that we know we're not going to be able to hit in ELA or mathematics or whatever it might be. So we've been tracking all of those priority standards that have been taught. And then we've been tracking certain standards that might be considered secondary standards that we've had to actually pull out of some of our units of study just because we know we won't be able to accomplish all of that. So certainly as we move into the fall, it's going to look very different. We're going to have to look at units of study and where we're going to start kids as second graders versus where they may have started a year ago as a second grader or as a sixth grader. I think the message that we've been delivering to all of the staff is right now, the consistency is so critical. So how is a third grader's experience and what is the third grader learning? So that when we move to fourth grade, we can try to start identifying what would be considered instructional gaps that we're going to need to fill. So at this point, we would say nobody's ahead, nobody's behind, they're right where they're supposed to be. And that it's our job as teachers in the fall to figure out where those instructional gaps are and how we're going to close those instructional gaps. And so that we've really been looking at this, you know, K-12, especially those courses that build upon other courses. You know, if you're in French two and you're moving to French three, what will that look like at the high school level? So K-12, we've really been spending a lot of time looking at that. I would imagine that even some of the curriculum writing that we're going to do this summer is going to look different than it has in the past because it's identifying what standards have we pulled out and how will we go back in to assess the kids in the fall and then teach those standards and make sure that we close instructional gaps.
Great. Thank you. And to think of all the lessons that, you know, our kids are learning beyond the curriculum, there's a lot, there'll be a lot to reflect upon.
And our teachers are learning a lot of lessons and they're modeling all of that, that perseverance and taking risks. And when things are challenging, keep that smile on your face and keep going, even though the technology didn't work that day. They're learning a lot of lessons.
Julie.
There we go. Just along those lines for curriculum, I'm wondering what is the thinking for the seniors? You know, obviously they're not going out on their, their internships. So is there, you know, what, what is the plan for them in terms of what, what will fill the time that would have been internships? Is it more sort of a continuation, an extension of the curriculum? Is it more projects? Do you, you know?
Yeah, we, we began that conversation a bit, well, continued it with our high school staff even last week. And they've been thinking about it for a bit. The probably more project based activities for them, I would imagine in the curricular areas, of course. But I think that, you know, our seniors have had such a rich experience all the way through. We don't want it, it shouldn't look the same as the other grades, right? This is as they move into it. So the teachers will have quite a bit of flexibility to collaborate together, to do things interdisciplinary and creatively for students to, to give them some projects and keep them engaged with, you know, with something as we go through. I think that's the best, the best thing that we can do. The, so some of the teachers have even requested, if we do take kind of reverse snow days, to please do it after the AP exams. It's there, they're all still pretty focused on, on those upcoming APs in a couple of weeks.
Sure.
And just, sorry. No, go ahead. No, I was just going to say, and certainly with the block scheduling, it provides some opportunities to even do some interdisciplinary work so that they could do some problem based learning. And we've seen some of those projects before, especially in particular with science and with math. So it's really trying to share out some of those problem based learning situations that they've had opportunities to do in the past and expanding upon those.
Okay. And then just turning to the teachers for a sec, is your sense of, you know, I mean, as Sherry said, what they're doing right now is heroic and the, the time, I mean, I can't even imagine the time spent and all that. What is your sense, Jill, of, of how they're feeling? You know, is it, you know, I'm sure exhausted, I'm sure, you know, but, but their teacher's in there. So, you know, they're used to putting themselves out there and being as creative as they can. But this is really testing, you know, really testing them. So is your, how is your sense of how they're feeling?
I think you gave us some great characteristics. I think they are exhausted. And I have to say that when I watch those videos, I know these teachers so well. And I know that oftentimes that's not the first take. They watch the video and they, oh, I don't like the way that sentence came out. So they redo the entire video again. They're, they're perfectionists and they want everything to be great for their kids. But they are working incredibly hard and they're exhausted. And they continue to show a smile on their face every time they meet with the kids and they continue to encourage them to keep going. And we do our best to keep encouraging them to keep going. That's what the principals and assistant principals and all of us at the cabinet level continue to do because it's exhausting. And they are working harder than they've ever worked before. I think they're probably putting in more hours than they did their first year of teaching because they're doing new learning while they're also teaching their curriculum. So it's how am I want to present this? Do I use Screencastify? Do I use Flipgrid? Oh, what, how do I go about using Flipgrid again? I mean, there's so much preparation that's going into all the lessons that they're doing, so.
The other thing that I'll add, Julie, is that
The other thing that I'll add, Julie, is that Brian and Jill and I are in pretty consistent dialogue with Vivian and Rana to kind of keep an ear toward if there are any issues of concern that we might need to hear about and work through, any questions that need to be answered or information given to the teachers. And, you know, I, I think we've been stayed, we've stayed solidly in the loop with the two of them for seven weeks now, or is it eight?
Seven.
Or is it 10?
That's great. Thank you. I mean, I, you know, from a parent perspective, just what, what we see on our end is, is incredible. The, the preparation is, is goes unsaid, but just the spirit and the, the communication that comes out, you know, from, from, I mean, I only see the high school level, but it's just, it's so positive. And I just think that that's, you know, can only benefit our kids and our families. But I know it, it takes a lot for all of you guys and the staff and the teachers to be doing it. So we're incredibly grateful.
Diana.
Thank you. So Darlene, with sort of this, you know, sort of added stress, are we seeing any end of year resignations that we weren't anticipating?
Well, Diana, that's a good question. We are, we are monitoring the retirements well. I'm also looking at just generally numbers of teachers and what age they might be in the kind of proactive stance of wanting everyone to stay. So we are monitoring that. We did have two recent, very recent retirements. But, you know, retirement is something that people think about at certain stages in their lives, just generally. This may add another dimension to that. We're aware of that. So we'll be, we'll be monitoring that and talking about it.
And then you mentioned, Dr. Lottzie mentioned earlier that we have, or maybe, maybe Dr. Karanti did. We, we're having some illness with our teachers and, you know, I guess, two things, you know, sort of, I don't know if you have sort of a percentage that are out due to illness or, and also, you know, sort of what is our COVID experience in the district as sort of like a percentage of teachers or staff?
So it's a very small number who've actually been diagnosed as COVID positive. But you all know that if they have been exposed to someone, then they're, they're quarantined, they're self-quarantining for two weeks. So there's been a little bit more of that and a little less of a positive diagnosis. It's actually less than, less than 10.
Okay. And, you know, sort of, how are we supporting our, our substitutes in, in that environment? Cause I mean, it, you know, paying a substitute's an interesting experience in general, but adding this layer on.
Yeah, well, we, we, you know, we were proactive about that. In terms of the bigger picture of planning, we, we took this into consideration. Whenever we knew that there was going to be a long-term leave of absence, we planned proactively with people that we know that have worked for the district that have been preferable and had dialogue with them to kind of plan that ahead of time. So a lot of the long-term leaves in terms of, you know, FMLAs were, were already planned. So that's a really good thing. The short terms, you know, like as in the, the two-week self-quarantine, we created a list before we went out of subs that we prefer that might want a shorter-term project. Actually, we, we have a lot of subs who are disappointed that they're not working because there are less, you know, daily subs, there are no daily subs other than in those two-week situations. So we're doing okay with it.
Well, thank you.
And where we can, I think we're using TAs as well in a couple of spots, right?
Yeah, we're, we're actually moving TA.
They know the kids, they know.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I, and I just wanted to echo what has already been said. Thank you to everyone for, you know, sort of hanging in there through, you know, these very extended, challenging times. I know it's, I can't, you know, I can't imagine what it's, what it's like having to do this daily, day in, day out and not really seeing an end in sight. So thank you very much. Thank you.
Sheri.
So I just have a quick follow-up on what Julie was speaking about with the seniors and the internship program and the fill-in for that time. And I would just encourage us to look at the possibility of delivering some of those career readiness training elements, either virtually or if we're, in the unlikely case, we're back in person. But I think, you know, the purpose and objectives of the internship program still remain in terms of giving, getting those students ready. Everything from resume and interview prep to public speaking, to sexual harassment training. All of those elements are still essential for them as they go out into their first experience, whether that be this summer or at college. And I think that we could apply kind of the same e-learning rigor and, and easily administer some of those elements virtually. So I would just encourage us to look at that as a possibility.
I think that makes good sense, Sheri. Thank you. As, as a board member and as someone who regularly hosts many of our interns, I think that's a good insight. Thank you. Patty.
I wouldn't just echo, I thought Sheri's idea was great and I'm sure you all are thinking about it. And other elements that I thought would be terrific to be able to do for the seniors and maybe there's a way to do it well, is I always thought bringing back the college freshmen to talk to the seniors as they're graduating. At least those, I mean, the college freshmen did have a regular first term at least. And I thought that they might, that might, might be particularly important. They might have particularly good ideas because they've experienced a term at college and now a term of distance learning. And I don't know how a lot of the colleges are planning to start their freshman classes. But that might be a program that we want to expand in some fashion. You know, with smaller rooms where people could chat. I mean, the one good thing that we have is we know our returning freshmen are probably at home or available or a lot more of them. So I, I know that that's another item of planning, but call that as a possibility as well. I was curious what you all were thinking about it.
Yeah, I think that, you know, as we continue to learn more and kids even start to learn, are they going back for the fall? Are they not, you know, what the colleges are going to look like and, and, you know, with our students, what's, what's happening? I think that we're going to be looking for many creative ideas to have, keep those, the seniors engaged and to break up the, the routine a bit for them. So I think all ideas are welcome. Thank you.
And just to echo, all the staff, everything you're doing, keeping the spirits up and, and all the, sort of the daily fun aspects of, you know, that, that, that the principals are finding. And it's, it's very rewarding to see the district coming together and working this hard. So thank you all.
Carl.
So I would imagine that some students are finding the transition more difficult than others based on, you know, learning styles, I'm just, levels of executive function, I'm sure, are getting exaggerated here in terms of the, you know, impact that it has on getting on task and staying on task and staying organized, et cetera. And so I'm wondering if there's been any attempt, you know, systematically to try to identify students that have seen a decline kind of across all their classes. And it's, you know, notable, so that if there's any kind of outreach, you know, to identify and then, and then outreach to try to address situations like that. So interested in anything you can say on that topic.
Yeah, well, I can share, we had a conversation just the other day. It was, we were talking about grading and then it looped into exactly what you're talking about a bit. Where our high school counselors are working very actively, they're reaching out to teachers, asking them around student participation. And if they're seeing a decline for any of our students, you know, a grade level or two, you know, one grade or more, they're looking at reaching out, calling them, making sure that they're okay, making sure they're participating. So I'm, I know that there's similar things happening in the middle school. It's part of the byproduct of a pretty, a well kind of designed and implemented system. So if we start to see that students are not sort of engaging with that system, we know pretty quickly we're able to, our counselors are making those calls and reaching out. And really it's, it's also, it's a health call. If we see that students all of a sudden are, they start to fall behind in one way or another, we want to make sure we place a call to the house to make sure the students are okay, the parents are okay, that, you know, they're first and foremost, that they're healthy. And then we get in a little bit more around, you know, those other pieces, the organization, the executive functioning. We know that this environment can be really, very challenging for kids. Interestingly, one of the things that, you know, I, I continue to find in talking with people is that kids that are more introverted are more challenged in this environment sometimes because they have to initiate the contact instead of being part of a system that forces the contact on them. So if students are reluctant to reach out for help, they're the ones, they're often ones we need to identify and reach out actively and proactively to them. So we're, we're working through that and working on that. You know, it's, there's that paradox of we're all isolated, but the extroverts are still in a better position because they're the ones that will more quickly reach out if they don't understand something or they need help. So we, our counselors are very well aware of that and are working to identify and communicate with kids early, wherever they can.
So I, and I just want to add in that we, you know, early on, the crisis advisory board across the district did create a, a protocol that we follow K-12 for when we're starting to see kids disengage. So that's a systematic approach, whether they're in elementary school or whether they're in middle school or in high school. And so that has been working quite well because everybody's at least reaching out to families, using counselors, using whatever support mechanisms that they have. The other thing that we also did that I thought has been really helpful at the middle school level is we did open email for seventh and eighth graders. And this upcoming week, we're going to open email for sixth grade. And what we've noticed is it allows the teacher to directly connect with the student. And so they don't have to go through Google Classroom. The student will, they'll still go through Google Classroom, but if the teacher gives them feedback on the assignment, they get like an email notification to look at what that feedback is. And we've also found that to be really helpful because the teacher can reach out to the student first and say, hey, I've noticed, you know, you're, you haven't attended my Zoom session, is everything okay? Or I noticed you haven't submitted this assignment, you know, I'm going to give you an extra 24 hours before I need to reach out to your mom or dad. And we've been noticing that all of a sudden they're like, ooh, they're communicating with me. And so that has also helped to keep that connection going. So we're planning an open sixth grade this week and then we'll kind of take a pulse on where we are and whether we're going to open up fifth grade. We probably won't go below fifth grade, though.
Thank you for that. So yeah, as a, as a, as a parent to three different types of learners, I can see that, that variation and just the, the contact that, hey, we're still out here and we're still, you know, watching what you're doing and caring. You know, sometimes that's all it takes is just that little kind of tug on the sleeve to, to, you know, keep it going.
Yeah. Thank you.
So thank you for that.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, then we'll turn it over to Dr. Keating for an update on the statement of accounts.
Great.
Thank you. So before you, tonight is the March 31st statement of accounts. So we're about, so we're 75% through the fiscal year. You'll notice that we have four and a half percent of our budget that has not been expended or encumbered to date. And that's a little higher than normal and it's really reflective of the fact that we haven't been in session for over a month. As you go through here, you're going to notice some accounts that have some balances left in, especially in the non-salary accounts. And that's where we're expecting a majority of the money to be remaining at year-end, to go back to the town. Several weeks ago, the town did ask us to give them an estimate of how much we would be sending back to the town at year-end, given this current situation. And we did inform them at that time that we feel at a minimum, it'll be a half a million dollars or $500,000. And that's just a function of not operating the buildings. It really has to do with our energy accounts, it has to do with our maintenance accounts, things that normally happen on a day-to-day basis just do not need to take place right now. So that's what we're looking at in terms of sending money back to the town. And like I said, it could be higher than that. It really depends on a few different factors. A majority of the money will not be coming from the salary accounts. We do expect to have some money remaining in the substitute account, as Darlene alluded to earlier, and the overtime accounts and a few of the other accounts that are variable, such as stipends that haven't been incurred or gate, gate wall support and that kind of thing for athletic events. But the majority of our salary accounts are being paid out, as you know. So we do not expect a significant amount of money to come out of the salary accounts. We will be monitoring it very closely as we go through the next month. And we have spent money on COVID. This report only shows what we spent through the end of March. So I have provided you with a document, just a listing by category of where we have spent money on COVID-related expenses. The majority has been in the food service area because of the programs that we are providing. And we do expect to have some relief from various funding sources for the three programs that we're currently running. In addition to the food service, which was 74,000, we've had some periods of deep cleaning prior to going out. We don't have to have any deep cleaning, obviously, when the buildings aren't being occupied. But if some, by some chance, we do go back in before the end of the year, this account will again go up quite a bit because we do have to do some significant deep cleaning. So that represents the second biggest category of 40,000. Technology has been 38,000. That includes software, some hardware and some connectivity for families that did not have Wi-Fi. And we had a few that we, you know, several actually, that we did have to buy some Wi-Fi access for. We have customized masks that we're purchasing for all the staff and the students. It's 9,500. And instructional is only $2,800, which is just a few things that the schools and Jill have needed for the students. So overall, right now, we're at 164. Out of these items that we have right now, the sources of funding that are available from the federal government are coming through FEMA. And Bill Ossman on the town side is coordinating all of the expenditures for both the town and the Board of Education. And we've been working with him to document all of the data that he needs to actually submit reimbursement requests for. We also have another source of funding that's been approved by, by the federal government and that's going to come from the State Department of Education. And that is total, equal to 85% of our Title I money, which is just south of $100,000. That has some regulations associated with it that are not related to these types of expenditures, but more towards educational type of expenditures. And I believe that they're going to take place when we get back into session. We may need some additional resources for different things and we'll have that source of money to rely on. That's an entitlement grant. It's not a competitive grant. So we will get that money regardless of our financial status in this instance. But that's where we stand right now. We do expect to incur more COVID-related expenses as we get into our planning for how we're going to keep the buildings clean once our students come back into session and how we're going to actually accommodate all of them if the social distancing standards continue at this six-foot distance. We've been really batting that around because we don't have the footprint available within the facilities to accommodate everybody on every given school day at that kind of space. So it's going to be interesting as we go along to determine what the resources are going to be moving forward, but we will keep you updated on a monthly basis. Any questions?
Yeah, actually, I, I don't have any on this specifically. It's all pretty straightforward, but as you look toward next year, you know, I guess it's, it's hard to know exactly what we're going to be doing in the fall. But are you, are you planning from a budget standpoint on the basis of, you know, doing things the way we've always done them? Are you making, you know, certain assumptions that, you know, things may change a little bit? How are you thinking about that at this stage? Maybe too early, frankly, but we're going to ask the question.
Yeah, I could start, and of course, Brian, you can jump in, but so we don't know what it's going to look like is the bottom line. But so we don't know what it's going to look like, is the bottom line. It's going to be hard to tell. And I think as we move through the next few months, we're going to have more clarity in terms of guidance from the Health Department and from State Department of Education and in terms of how we're going to be required to accommodate students in our buildings. As you know, the buildings are not built for a six-foot distancing. And we've been doing some research and reading about what's going on overseas. And they've cut back to like 10 to 12 children per classroom. So one of the things that we're doing right now, and Dan and I were working on it today, is we have a layout of every single building, every single space is identified with a square footage so that we know, you know, how many kids we can fit in each classroom. And the classrooms aren't all standard. We go from 700 square feet a classroom and some of the spaces that sacks to 1,100 at the elementaries in some of the areas. So it's very different across the district. And it's going to take a lot of thinking in terms of how we accommodate our students. And it's not only in the buildings, it's how we get them there, you know, by buses. It's the same concept that the airlines are going through, you know? How do you really get people into confined spaces in a safe way and keep them safe? So we have a lot of thinking to do over this. And we're going to, we're staying plugged into all the good thinking that's going on and elsewhere, other places around the country. So we're going to have to have a couple of different plans. I think we're going to have to think in a few different directions as we put this all together.
Yeah, that's the only thing I'd add is that we're doing some if-then planning because we don't know what the then is yet. So trying to think about what the scenario might look like if the six feet is, if that's the guidance. If, you know, if it's a full day of school, then, you know, sort of thinking about different scenarios and what it may all look like until we know for sure what the guidelines are going to be. It's definitely a rabbit hole, you can get lost down.
Yeah.
Be prepared regardless. And I know we will.
We'll be prepared, exactly.
Thanks.
Okay. With that, we'll open it back up for any comments from the public. Anybody who would wish to address the board?
Lisa? Lisa?
Quickly, I want to say thank you for everything the district is doing, our teachers. It's been a seamless transition for my girls and they're loving it. And we see all of the hard work and we're really grateful for it. So thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Okay, I don't see any.
Okay. So Dr. Letzey, any additional announcements or future business?
No, I guess the only announcement would be again that we're continuing to refine our approach towards grades and we'll have that out this week so that folks know. I think our, our students, our teachers, our parents, everybody is, you're sort of looking forward to that guidance and what that's going to be. And to share that we have in the calendar as our next Board of Education meeting, a workshop that was scheduled last year when we put in our dates around, you know, regular meetings. So this is scheduled as a regular meeting is the workshop. I thought that we would be wise to leave it in the calendar right now. There may be other things that, things we want to workshop as a board. The, so that's our, would be our next meeting a week from now. Of course, this is May 4th. So I get in trouble if I didn't say, may the 4th be with you for those Star Wars fans out there. And, and again, to say.
I love it.
Yeah, yeah. We've been, my daughters and I, we watched all of the Lord of the Rings movies together. Now we're midway through the Star Wars trilogy, trilogy, what is it, nine, however many, 10, 12, working through the Star Wars movies and then we'll have to pick something else next, so.
It's a great use of time, in my opinion.
Some family together time every night as we, as we finish our work. Yep. I love it. I would show you the socks I'm wearing, but I will go there, Star Wars. Anyway, so we're continuing to, also continuing to the business of the district. Tomorrow morning at 8:30, we'll be at the Board of Selectmen's meeting, talking about the East Roof and the solar project and the other, you know, other things that are underway on the Capitol side. And we're continuing to, you know, have those meetings, have those conversations and keep things moving forward. So I'm very proud of everybody's efforts and how everybody has all worked together. And thank you, you know, to the board for being as available as you have been as we've gone through. I know sometimes there's meetings on short notice, continue doing that good work. And we'll continue each day, addressing every, all the questions that each day brings. So thanks.
Thank you. And thank you. Yeah, I think, you know, it's important to note that May is an extraordinarily busy month in any regular school year. And so now, you know, you're doing all of the planning with a whole set of different rules and already looking to next year with many unknowns. So I know there's a lot on your plates and we thank you all. So I think we're probably standing between you and a Star Wars movie. Is there a motion to adjourn? Brendan, second, Deanna, all in favor? All right. Good night, everyone.